This meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is June 11th, 2024. Can I have the roll call, please?
Councilor Knutson?
Here. I already said it.
Vogelzang?
Here.
Nguyen?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich?
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich?
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay. Next item, I have a proclamation for Pride Month. Okay. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, and asexual communities across the nation annually celebrate pride in their culture and community in the month of June. And whereas the annual celebration of pride began as a collective protest for the rights of LGBTQIA+ individuals and communities. And whereas the national tradition of celebrating pride in June is a tribute to the Stonewall riots of June 1969, which are remembered as the launch of the modern LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And whereas transgender people of color, including Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and Storm Delavrieux, were the primary instigators of the national fight for LGBTQIA+ rights and often gave their work and their lives to the cause. And whereas the city of Coralville recognizes the many LGBTQIA+ lives that continue to be lost each year in pursuit of living out their authentic identities. And whereas the city of Coralville welcomes and accepts people of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expression, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and culture of these community members. And whereas each year Iowa City Pride brings together thousands of LGBTQIA+ people throughout Coralville and Iowa City, from across Iowa and beyond, to celebrate their shared identities and experiences. And whereas Iowa City Pride will be celebrating the city's 54th Annual Pride Festival on June 15th. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 to be Pride Month in the city of Coralville. And signed on this 11th day of June 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right. Very excited to read this proclamation. And we have some guests here to receive it, some folks from Iowa City Pride who are here to talk to us about some of the new events we have going on. So if you'd like to step up to the mic and introduce yourself and talk about the fun stuff we have going on this week.
So Mayor Foster, members of the city council, it is my pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Andy Owens. I am currently the vice president of Iowa City Pride. I'm joined here this evening by Joe Riley, who is our current president. We are so thrilled and thankful for the proclamation. We have been looking forward to this partnership for a long time, and it's something that we look forward to building on in the future. This year, we have a lot of new events that are going on throughout Pride Week as we have it now. It's not just a one-day festival anymore, it's an entire week. Last night, we had a very successful event at Tavern Blue to do some putt-putt for Pride. This evening, we have a bar crawl in downtown Iowa City. Tomorrow night is our annual picnic at Upper City Park in Iowa City. Thursday night is a new experiment, I'll call it, Drag Queens on Ice, which we're very excited about. Then we rest on Friday, and the festival is on Saturday. And Joe accepted a proclamation from Iowa City from Mayor Teague last week saying repetitively, it seems like we say this every year, the festival is the biggest yet. This will be our biggest festival yet again. We have, I believe, over 130 vendors who are coming on Saturday.
Seventy parade entries?
Right. It will be a massive event, and we are so thankful for your sponsorship and for the leadership that you, Mayor Foster, and that the council has shown. On a personal note, I am not from Iowa, I'm from Pennsylvania. I moved here six years ago. I wasn't sure what to expect here. I'm very happy and proud to be joined by my partner tonight who's here. And we really just look forward to continuing this partnership to make Johnston County a safe haven for everybody in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just have to say, I am beyond disappointed that I am going to be out of town for the Drag Queens on Ice. I have to be in Washington, DC, but I, oh, I'm heartbroken that I'm missing that event. I take lots of pictures and video, please. Would you like a photo?
Yes.
All right.
He'd be over here anyway.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Okay. I have one more proclamation to read this evening, and this is for Juneteenth. Whereas independence for the pilgrims from the colonial rule of Great Britain came in the year 1776, following the Revolutionary War. And whereas even after this independence was won, the people brought from Africa to this country were still forced to remain in legalized human slavery. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln did sign an executive order entitled the Preliminary Emancipation Proclamation in September of 1862. And this was a test to see how the American people would react to the idea of freeing the human slaves from free labor, cruel treatment, sexual assaults, forced illiteracy, segregation of public services and amenities, and forced announcement of their African roots. And whereas in January of 1863, President Lincoln issued the final emancipation proclamation, but the Confederate States of America did not honor it. After the Civil War and the defeat of the last troops in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, the people of African descent were finally conditionally freed from slavery unless convicted of a crime. Whereas Juneteenth is the celebration of this historic event commemorating the national freeing of enslaved people in a way that cherishes the liberties that we now all share. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby join governments across the country to proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth, and urge all citizens to recognize this week by becoming aware of emancipation, which affects the liberties of all people of color till this very day. Signed on this 11th day of June 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. There we go. Give that to you. And we will move on to the next agenda item. Number five, we have community comments. And this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. And each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So do we have anyone that would like to speak to us this evening? Don't believe that we do. So we can move on to the next agenda item. Consolidated Transit Funding Application. This is the public hearing for this item. And this application will fund several projects for our transit program. I'll start by opening the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about this? And do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2025, Iowa DOT State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration funding, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a public hearing for disposal of city property. Iowa Valley Habitat for Humanity will purchase the lot at 708 Ninth Avenue, and they will construct a single-family house on the property within 18 months that will then be restricted to owner-occupied housing for 20 years. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? And do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property that property generally referred to as 708 Ninth Avenue, Coralville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Alliant Parcel Donation. This parcel is currently owned by Alliant, Alliant, and it is located west of 12th Street and south of Tabernacle Baptist Church and the Crandic Railroad right-of-way. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the donation of a parcel of property from Interstate Power and Light Company, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. So I just, can you give us a bit of an idea of where this is exactly?
Yeah, this is the green space that stretches from Springdale Court up to the railroad tracks, to the Crandic tracks. And it also includes, well, this parcel doesn't, but the land adjacent to it is where the Stormwater Basin is at the end of Springdale as well. So there's that large green space that goes from Springdale up to the railroad tracks. About half of it is green space, the other half is woods.
Okay.
I think mostly that this parcel is the woodlands.
Awesome.
Are there plans to utilize them? It's all overgrown. Is there any plans to use it for anything?
We have our Parks Direct, Parks and Rec Director Sherry Proud coming up to share some info with us.
I think this was always intended to be part of when we put in Springdale, the Springdale Stormwater Basin, and the nature trail that goes to the north and then goes over to 12th Avenue. And in, it got lost kind of in all of the concepts. So it's been quite some time, and they circled back and said, hey, we still own this piece of property. Would you, would you still like to have it? Carbon benefits, tree benefits, could be an area that could be part of a future woodland restoration project. But, you know, mostly the benefit is that it's, it's public property that will stay public property and, and stay, you know, the tree, it's got some pretty trees in there.
Great.
Excellent. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Is there any condition attached to this donation?
Read clear. It's not bad. Like that. Okay.
The, I'm sure, you know, Interstate Power owned, owns the railroad tracks. So I'm sure this was some parcel at some point that went with the railroad tracks. I don't know why they would have had it, but that's the history of that. It's the same owner as the railroad tracks.
Future stop for an electric train?
There you go. There you go. Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the second reading of our ordinance that would adopt geothermal well standards to protect the city's water supply. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1003, and ordinance amending the city of Coralville Code of Ordinances 2011 as previously amended, establishing geothermal well standards for, introduced for adoption for second consideration by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this item? Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Next item, dock and walkway easement. This is for an easement for the dock and walkway at the Elevate condominiums. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a dock and walkway easement with the Elevate condominium homeowners' association for Outlet F, Bridgewater Subdivision, Coralville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Questions or comments?
This is already done, isn't it?
Yeah.
We're just making sure that they give us their insurance certificates and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Originally, all that was going to be private. And when we did the subdivision and worked with the developer, it was determined that there's a lot more people that could make use of that, those improvements than just the elevator. And so they agreed to make it public land. And so the pond and all, and the trail is now public. And so others, like Bridgewater and, and some of those other neighborhoods can make use of that as well.
Yeah. Will that ever go all the way around that pond?
Yeah, that, the intent is that ultimately, yeah, that there'd be it all the way around.
A little circle there.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a couple of bonds we need to approve. The first is, the first bond will finance a portion of the costs of the planning, designing, construction improvements, and extensions to the system, including the West Land Use Area Central Trunk Sewer Project Phase Two. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing and approving a sewer loan and disbursement agreement providing for the sale and issuance of sewer revenue bonds, Series 2024C, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the next one, this bond will finance a portion of the costs of planning, designing, and constructing improvements and extensions to the system, including the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main project. Could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution authorizing and approving a sewer loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the sale and issuance of sewer revenue bonds, Series 2024D, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or discussion?
This is a question from Scott. All the red flags along Oakdale, those are all for this Force Main? Yeah, along from Brown Deer?
Up to 12.
Up to west of Oak, on Oakdale?
That might be a little bit premature because the pre-construction meeting for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main project is this Friday.
Okay.
So.
There's a bunch of red flags up there, so I just wondered.
That actually might be related to design work for well 16 improvements.
Okay.
Which is just getting underway, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, consulting services proposal. And this is for Kayler Consulting, so that they can assist us in our search for a new police chief. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with Kayler Consulting LLC to assist in the search for and hiring of a police chief, introduced for adoption by Councilmember, I don't know what I had on that. Nguyen, excuse me. Seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. So I think it might be good to just talk a little bit about how this process would work. I, there are several steps. I've been really impressed as I've been reading through the, the information that they've sent. And there's, there's a lot of opportunities for feedback along the way. And I believe this is the same company that you used the last time, correct?
They ran the assessment center the last time for the chief's position. We've used them several times for promotions in the department as well, for both sergeant and lieutenant. And one of the things that they do as part of the assessment center is bring in other law enforcement people from other communities and other areas to give you just feedback as to the candidates, strictly feedback. And this is things you may want to know or think about. And it's always been interesting to me because you always find out something about one of the candidates that you would never have known. So there, as the mayor said, there would be several opportunities for people to give feedback from the very beginning in regards to the position and the, what the interest and what the things that we'll be looking for. And that will be both public council, management team, officers, all will give feedback on that. Then there'll be two or three different interview panels, and then a public reception, which the last time when we did that was a very, very good tool for just the general public to meet the candidates and give their feedback as well. So a lot of different opportunities for people to participate in this process.
And the timeline?
Yeah.
We're looking, I think probably at sometime in August, correct?
Yep.
Where the entire process, where we have, will have gone through the entire process.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah. Stay tuned. The reception, I attended the reception a few years ago when we were going through this process. And I would really encourage folks to come, to come to that. It's just great to interact with all of the candidates, learn a little bit about them. And, you know, you get a real sense of what their background is and, you know, how they would, how they would fit into our, our department. So when we have that information, I would encourage everybody to, to attend. And, and you can, if you aren't able to attend, you know, you can always reach out to us, share your thoughts and feedback, and just keep your eyes and ears posted as we, as we continue this process. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, golf cart lease agreement. This is a lease for 60 golf carts and two beverage carts at the Brown Deer Golf Course for 60 months. And the public hearing for this item will be on June 25th.
Mayor, they have switched up here. We are actually going to do a two-year extension of the original lease, so we don't have to have a public hearing. So we're going to go ahead and approve the two-year lease extension on the current lease terms.
Okay.
And if you have any other questions, I'm sure Sherry can answer those questions for you.
Okay. So no public hearing, we are just extending the current?
And the, yeah.
And part of the reason for that is it would take almost two years to get new golf carts.
It's a good reason.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
I haven't had the resolution.
Have I read the, oh, you have, you have you read it?
No.
Oh, sorry.
So we're, this is the.
You threw me off my rhythm. It's okay. It's okay. Go for it. So the ordinance?
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Yep.
Resolution.
Resolution approving a lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Corporation for the Brown Deer Golf Course, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Now, any questions or comments?
How is this compared to the original lease in terms of, it looks like 30 grand a year?
Sherry, yeah.
Is it a little bit of less because it's not so new?
So our, so in the fall of '22, we actually mapped out this route that long ago. And we needed to, because of the wear and tear and use of all of our golf carts and our rounds being so high, we typically will have to put about 10 batteries out of 60. Batteries are not covered by warranty on our golf fleet, golf cart fleet. We had, I think it was 54 out of 60 golf carts that needed new batteries. So we approached Yamaha on a lease extension, and they gave us a series of opportunities to figure that out. I included that in your council packet, correct? Yes.
Yeah.
And so we opted to go with, a lot of them had big upfront payments. Instead, we opted to take a two-year extension on this lease and then spread those payments out. So our lease, our yearly lease agreement will go up $15,748.80. And that's an add-on to our existing, our already existing lease of, I believe our payments were $42,300. So somewhere in there, I need to, to look that up just to make sure. But our new agreement is $59,700.
For two years? Or is that per year?
Per year. Right.
Per year, for two years.
So yes, I think that 42, and just on my paper here, 42, 3, I think does not include the lease on the, of about 4,700 a year on the other concessions carts.
So that includes the GPS maintenance of the carts?
GPS is different, a totally separate system that can add on to our cart. So it's, it's just the carts themselves.
Excellent. Any other questions?
So why are we paying more for used carts than we were for new? Because it took five years ago whenever they were new, right?
They were new, and we had to replace all the batteries. So upfront, the upfront battery cost was like $80,000. And approximately. So we actually are paying kind of, we get them renovated, and we get to pay it over two years versus paying that upfront cost on it. So we, we considered outright buying of the carts. We considered a lease extension of, of more than two years. We, we considered a lease extension of, let's see, upfront payments for the batteries in '23, and then reducing our lease upfront payments of 23, in '23, but then adding three more years to our lease. And then this one, we landed on extended lease two years and paid for those. That, that's third, a little over $31,000. We'll, we'll get our batteries replaced. Carts are in good shape.
Oh, so this pays for the replacement of the batteries?
Right. Sean feels really good about.
That's what I was missing.
Yeah. Sean feels good about the, the condition of the carts. We've been able to make any other repairs with Yamaha. It's just one of those unfortunate things that we always know. Our batteries are never going to be under the, the warranty.
Right.
And so they won't put them, they won't replace them, and that's always going to be on our cost. And usually, we can plan for that five to 10 range. We just have had so much play that we were just kind of really stuck with a lot.
They're in great shape. I, last week, I thought I had a brand-new cart.
Good.
It was great.
Good. That means we're taking good care of them, and they're lasting. So we will start the process this fall, early winter, of bidding out and looking at the lease for 2026, so that we can have that in place by, by early winter and get our carts ordered.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
It's great they're getting used a lot.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to Z.
Okay. Moved by Nguyen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
The consent calendar is appro- The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. All right, city administrators report.
Yes, this evening, we had a great turnout for our open house to review the Recreation Center master plan. And we got a lot of feedback that they'll be coordinating that information. But there, if you didn't get to come this evening, there'll still be opportunities. We'll have the set of the boards here at City Hall, there'll be a set up at the Recreation Center, and then there'll be the information on our website as well. So we encourage people to continue to review those, ask questions, and give feedback. So the school board will be discussing it, Sherry, I think it was next month, is that what they finally decided? Their portion of it, which is the competitive aquatics part, they'll be looking at that next month and giving us feedback as well. So just remind people, there's still opportunities to participate in that process. We had another great fire department memorial service on last weekend, both Saturday night and Sunday. And so there's a lot of people that put a lot of effort, park staff, fire department, and other departments as well to put that on. So it's just appreciated all the effort that people put into hosting that every year. Would just like to wish our city attorney, Don Deal, a happy birthday. Today is his birthday, so.
True.
Yes, it is. And also, just note that we're replacing our police chief because he's retiring. And Shane has spent 34 years with the city of Corleville. So he was not only a chief, but he was an officer and has been with the community for a long, long time. And so just appreciate all of the service that he's given to the community. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I will piggyback off of that and just say, we will definitely miss Chief Crone. I don't know how much he will miss us. But we will miss him, and we definitely appreciate his service, long service to, to our community for sure. And yes, happy birthday, Don. Thank you for spending your birthday with us tonight. And we, we're, you know, always, always glad that you're, you're here and keeping us, keeping us on task every week. Really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Also, just wanted to talk a little bit about Pride and the Pride events that have been happening this week. The Putt-Putt event last night, so fun. What a great event. One of the things that I loved about the Putt-Putt event was that they had educational, educational things on each one of the holes that talked a little bit, and the miniature golf course, that talked a lot about the history of the LGBTQIA+ community. And there was a great band, and it was just a beautiful night. So really enjoyed that inaugural event. And again, I cannot tell you how upset I am that I'm going to miss the Black Queens on Ice, because that sounds incredible. But I will be in Washington, DC. And that event, it will be at Coral Ridge Mall on Thursday, June 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. So then, of course, the big Pride events will happen in Iowa City this weekend, the parade, all of the fun stuff that we typically associate with Pride. It's an Amber Alert. That's what that is.
Everybody's.
Yes, that's why everybody's phone's going off. So wonderful Pride events, really glad that we are able to partner with Iowa City Pride. This is our first year partnering with them, and I cannot wait. We've already talked about some great ideas down the road. I'm really looking forward to this partnership. And I also wanted to thank, thank Iowa City for helping us facilitate this revived version of Corleville Pride and, and helping us get that off the ground. Finally, I did want to just note that next week, there are Juneteenth events that are happening. The, there, on the weekend, the Pride, the celebration will kick off on Friday night, 4:00 PM, at the Ped Mall in Iowa City. There's going to be food, vendors, music performances. So cool that we get to celebrate Pride and Juneteenth kind of all at once. And I would just encourage folks to check out those Juneteenth events as well. I know there's a picnic in the park, I think, on Father's Day, and there's some other events happening next week as well. And that is all I have. City attorneys report.
I have nothing new.
Nope, does, just wish Don a happy birthday, so.
Excellent.
Many more to come.
Excellent, excellent. Yes, indeed.
As long as I don't have to run from the back to the front like Nguyen.
We'll try to keep that, the sprinting to a minimum, for sure. Okay, committee and council members report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Councilmember Peterson.
I don't really have much to add, other than was involved in a great event today for Boys and Girls of the Corridor, excuse me, Boys and Girls Club of the Corridor. I left a very important part of that out. We raised $22,000 today with Construction Partners and Alliant Energy through a golf event at Ellis Golf Course in Cedar Rapids. I think it's a great event, you know, it, it's people from Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, and the Buc area, so. Yeah, $22,000 was a pretty good, pretty good day. Yeah, that's all I have to add.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for that. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Summer is here, so that come along with a lot of summer activity and program that we have happening within our city. So the Corvo Public Library have something that called Adventure Pass. If you have never checked that out, I would encourage you to check it out. What, how it works is that the library partner with, you know, museum, with zoo, and then those places will provide a pass for a family of two adults and two kids. You can check out a pass, you can reserve the pass in advance. So if you know that there are a week that your family is free, you can reserve that pass in advance, and that will help reduce the cost to get you into, say, the children museum, the zoo in Davenport. There's a lot of really great partnership with that. So I would encourage people to check out that program, because the more people participate, it will bring the program back every year. Another thing that is happening in the city of Corleville is that we have a great children museum right at the mall. They have something called Museum for All. And so if your family that have kids that would like to check out a museum, but, you know, you, the cost is a barrier for your family, you just show up at the desk and tell them that, you know, you want to participate in the Museum for All program. They'll get you through the door with your kids and your family members, so you can enjoy a day at the museum free of charge. Summer lunch program at the Food Pantry is in full swing. The Food Pantry is an open site. That means that anyone can come and eat with us. You don't have to register in advance. Today is our first day, and we are going to serve for 10 weeks, all the way until August 16. And we encourage parents, can't take, go to Brinday Get Out to eat with us every day, Tuesday to Friday, from 11:30 to 1:00. On top of eating lunch with us, there will be different partner that come and provide a program. Today, the Public Library came and read a story. Tomorrow, a staff member or two staff member from the rec center will come and provide some game and fun. And then we partner with the children museum, Grove Johnson County, Johnson County Conservation. Go on the website, you can pull up the entire menu and activities for the entire summer from June to August. And then as a reminder, next Wednesday is Juneteenth. So we are going, the Food Pantry are going to be closed. So if you need food, please plan accordingly. Wednesday, we normally open from 4:00 to 6:00, but we will be closed, so plan accordingly. And I think that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. And I just have to say, I was at the Food Pantry today, helping with the program. There were a lot of people.
We served 60 meals today.
Wow, okay. I had to leave a little bit early, and there was already a good crowd there, so. Excellent, lots of, there's lots of, like she said, great activities and programming, but they also have book giveaways, they have games, so just a really, really fun way to spend the afternoon if you're looking for something to do over summer break. All right, Councilmember Vogelzang.
I got a few things. First of all, congratulate Chief Crone on your upcoming retirement. Thank you for your service and appreciate all that you've done, your leadership, appreciate it. Thank you. I don't see John Hines in the booth tonight, but I also want to congratulate him on the award he, he received. Congratulations on the, the Safety Village video that, that he put together. That was great. The preview tonight of all the concepts for the rec building were pretty amazing. They said they had 37 comment cards that they received tonight, so it's good feedback. So we've got some good decisions to make in the future. Also want to thank Lynn for the, putting together the bus tour of the city. Last, was that last week? That was last week, wasn't it? Yeah. Very interesting, informative, thank you for doing that. It's good. Sherry also tells me that the trail detour is now open all the way, all the way to Tiffin, correct? All the way to Tiffin, so that is now open and ready to use. One final thing, I just, I've been very involved with the Iowa Association of Realtors for, for many, many years. And yesterday and today, we have our summer meetings right here in Corleville, now at the Hyatt. So I was kind of doing some dual, dual duty, in addition to some of my committee work on the state association, but I was also doing some Chamber of Commerce promotions for, for Corleville. Everybody I talked to from across the state, just, they're thrilled and, and they're happy to be here in Corleville, and very complimentary on all the facilities that we have here. So it was, it was really, really, really good feedback, so. Very good, and that is all I have.
Excellent, thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, probably should give you a heads up, the next meeting, I may be a little hobbled. I'm getting a new knee, I'll be about three or four days out, so I'm hoping that I won't be necessary to hobble in here. But let me know if that's going to be a problem for a quorum or not. That would be my only concern. Hopefully after that, it's not. Might, might ask for a ride home on occasion, but for, for a few weeks, since it's my right knee, it, it might be a little while before I can bike or, or drive. So might miss that one, and that's all I got.
All right, well, best of luck, and hopefully everything goes really well and you have a speedy recovery. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, moved by Nguyen, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.